Good evening. I call to order the August 29, 2018 regular meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand and join me for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are committed to the academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire our passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Questions and comments from concerned citizens. Ed Kapalko?
Is that right? Evening. Ed Kapalko, Monroe resident. Why doesn't the school board have a yearly part of the budget put into a capital projects fund as opposed to having bond issues? Why have a special vote and not wait until the March budget vote for the, I guess you're gonna have a new special vote? I read in the paper that the proposed bond would be repaid by New York State funds. Would this be special funds earmarked for this bond or taken out of the general funds that are supplied by the state of New York? Is anything being proposed or worked on to offset the poor air quality due to the additional traffic near the school, the elementary school? And what is the current number of private school students that require busing for the new school year? How many required busing last school year? And what is the total number of students enrolled in the Monroe Woodbury School District, not including private students? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Lorraine Loaning, district resident. I was at the last regular board meeting and I listened to Mr. Cahill's presentation regarding the capital improvements. I have three questions that I'd like answered before the public hearing on this referendum. First, this is largely an athletic complex upgrade. I was wondering why a pool was excluded from the project. One of my kids is a swimmer and I've sat in many pool houses across the region. The Monroe Woodbury Pool checks a lot of your boxes. The facility is old and misplaced. With a few exceptions, pools are generally located in the high school of a district since that is where the varsity athletes are. The Monroe Woodbury Pool spectator area is small and uncomfortable. The pool deck is small and the lane widths are narrow. Additionally, as a community resource, a pool is lit and indoors and can operate for as long as you are willing to keep a building open. Also, when the fields are snow-covered, a pool can operate normally, therefore having a greater usefulness than a field. Why was the pool upgrade not included? Second, as I have stated, this seems to be largely an athletic complex upgrade. When discussions began for a capital improvement project, was there any consideration for projects that would enrich academics or the arts? After all, the primary responsibility of the district is to support the academic education of the student body. When this discussion began, was there a cross-section of people at the table representing different stakeholders and were their ideas, and their ideas, or was this athletic complex upgrade from the start? And lastly, you mentioned that this athletic complex upgrade would better position the district to contend for large tournaments and state meets, and I agree with that assessment. You also noted that there could be a benefit to the local economy if the district hosted these events. I was wondering if this was anecdotal or if there were metrics to support this assertion. Three years ago, the district did host a state meet for cross-country. Is there sales tax data, crowd estimates from local PD, or data from local businesses from during that meet's timeframe to support this claim? Answering these questions would allow me to make a better decision, a more informed decision regarding this referendum. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. When I first decided I was gonna come speak at this meeting about a week and a half ago, I had a much different mood in mind. I had a lot of different words in mind when I was first gonna come and speak at this meeting. However, a lot of that has changed over the last several days, and I really wanted to come here and also speak and promote the good that can happen as well in our community. And I'd like to thank you guys, as well as Andrew Giacamata and Jesus Gomez, for sitting down, discussing an issue about busing that really concerned me as a parent and the rest of our parents in our development for the safety of our children. You know, when you get despair and you think the system is broken, it's such a great thing to see the system actually work. And it renewed my faith in the fact that the system can work. It's not the system, it's the people at the helm of the system that make it work. And I want to thank everybody in this room for doing that and working together with us. And I think we have shown as a group what you can do when the community comes together, works together, and what it can accomplish together. We can do amazing things with some unity, and I just wanted to put that on the record and thank you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us. That's kinda hard to follow up. Mr. Graziano really covered all the points very easy, okay? What I would like to do, my name's Christopher Perino. I live at Highland Lake Estates. I'm also the vice president of their homeowners association, and I know there are other associations here tonight, too. I would like to take a moment to thank you guys, and especially Ms. Rodriguez, for taking the time to sit us down and work this out, okay? A lot of homeowners have contacted me from this morning until present to express that thank you to you guys, and we greatly appreciate it. And as he said, we would love to work with you again on many other issues that come up in the future, all right? Ms. Rodriguez, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. As with all comments from the public, the district will be reaching out to those people within two weeks to give them information if they request and follow up with them. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 1, 2018 regular meeting? As well as the August 21 special meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Second reading of the policy manual. Chris?
This is a second reading from, we tried to get this pushed along so for the first day of school. The first one is updated on concussion policy for when the student has a concussion, what needs to be done when the child comes back to school. We have a news media relations policy about who can speak to the media and who cannot. The school volunteers policy, which is something that the PTA would probably be mostly impacted. It's just a policy on who can be in the school and who cannot be in the school, and if we're keeping track of who and where. And there's an application that they need to fill out. And a student attendance policy, which was important for the safety of the students to get everybody accounted for during the day. So this is the second policy reading, and hopefully everything will go, and it'll start next week when school starts.
Anyone have any questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
That's what I said.
Are we gonna turn off the lights? There we go. He's working on it. I think it looks good. Well, good evening. Tonight, I'm gonna be presenting our strategic plan. This has been a very long process. I first want to thank the Board of Education because you have been so patient with us. We've been talking about a strategic plan for approximately three years. And I guess the statement, you know, good things take a long time to produce, so hopefully you are in agreement with me. I did email the entire board the actual final report, and so tonight, what you're gonna be seeing is just a very quick overview. I want to begin by, let's see if this is working. Come on, guys, don't make me look bad. I just can click it. There we go. So you see a lot of beautiful, lovely faces, and this was something that was completed with the help of a lot of people. So I don't know if there are people here that participated in the strategic plan, but if you did, can you please get up? Yeah, get up. I just want to say thank you. We also have Randy from PLC. Randy, can you please get up and we want to thank you as well? I think that when you look at these pictures, you can see that we lead this district with our hearts, and many of the people who participated definitely had the same vision as us. So we began this process back in January when we administered a survey to students, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, and support staff. One of the things that we felt was important was that we often communicate to people who have children that are in Monroe Woodbury. This time, we felt that it was important to reach out to everyone who lives in our school district, whether you have children or not, and get some feedback from them. We had 32 core members and 62 task force members. Core members are the people that began this project. The task force members were people who then took on the charge from the core team, and then they started to break out and talk about strategic intents, which I will speak about later. So one of the things that we developed was, we developed a vision. And for us, the vision is really what keeps us focused. And so our vision is, together, we inspire, we will inspire success based on foundation, a foundation of kindness, respect, honesty, and integrity. Did somebody clap? Oh, the children clap. Thank you. And the reason that I think that these words are important is because they speak to who we are as a school district. And I think that it's important because it talks about kindness, it talks about respect, it talks about honesty, it talks about integrity, all of those characteristics that are so important in helping to raise good young men and women who will be good citizens. And if you look at the bottom, we also developed what we call is a hashtag. So it's #MWInspiresSuccess. And if the board approves this this evening, this will become our logo, #MWInspiresuccess. So as I said, the task force began in January. They conducted research, they looked at best practices, they gathered information from important stakeholders, and then they, the task force, created what we call strategic intents. Their long-term goals achieved, and they'll be achieved by 2023. And then there's action plans. And again, it's a very comprehensive plan, and I'm really just giving you an overview. But the goal is to have all of these things accomplished by 2023. If you go into the actual strategic plan, you'll see that there are intense strategic intents that will be going through every year as we get to the five-year mark. So these are our areas of focus. And one of the things that you should see is that this came from the survey responses. Number one is curriculum and instruction. That is always gonna be the most important thing that we do as a school district. The second thing is emotional wellness. Today, we celebrated MW Cares. The actual event is on the 26th, October 26th, but it really signifies a commitment from the school district about how important it is for our students to be emotionally well. And not just our students, we're talking about our faculty, we're talking about our community members. Something that I wanted to share with everyone, and it's a daunting number, is that 1.7 million youths with major depression, depressive episodes did not receive treatment. That's a big number. The other thing that you should know is that there's currently a shortage of providers. So schools become the place where children, where we're gonna be supporting our children and our community members, because we have to remember that school doesn't work on its own. We are part of a larger community. The next item that we're focused on is student engagement. And that came from the fact that our students said, we want to be more involved in civic activities. We want to be recognized for the young adults that we are. We want our teachers to look at us and see us more than just an academic or a number. And that's really important for them. And what I'm so proud of is that this is their voice. So student engagement was the last piece, and then, nope, student engagement was the third, and then lastly was communication. Because if we don't operate with good communication, everything that we've worked for doesn't work well. So briefly go through some of these items. Curriculum and instruction task force, these are the tenants that they looked at. Review and evaluate our current professional development plan. We heard from our staff that they need us to provide us with the appropriate staff development so that they can do the work with our students, and we need to be responsive to that. The other piece is determine through research the best practices in curriculum design and instruction. We no longer can say, well, the state is telling us that this is what we need to do. We need to do our own research and say, how is the best way to do this? The next item is identify a system of curriculum audits. So we, and what we're meaning by curriculum audits is being able to look at the curriculum and say, does this serve our students the most efficient way? Is there something else that we're not providing our students with? And if there is, how do we make that happen? Last is determine ways to increase access to programming and enrichment opportunities for all students. And I focus the word on all students because this task force truly believed in the fact that we service all children and that they all should have enrichment opportunities. So the last thing is including student and family outreach. Again, it goes back to the community. Emotional wellness task force, they want to review the code of conduct for consistency and clarity. You know, when you talk about suspending students, if we're constantly suspending the same students over and over again, then are we doing the right thing? Because what we want to do is change behavior, and we want to support our students to grow into good young adults. And then consistently review the social-emotional needs of our students. Those needs are changing. We see this all the time. We see that our students and the community at large is really dealing with a lot of emotional issues, and that really impacts learning. So we need to address that, and then access the current levels of social-emotional support for our students. Student engagement task force, increase student engagement both inside and outside the classroom. Our students said they just don't want to be, you know, counted for what they're doing in the classroom, they want to be outside. And I think one of the beauties about our school district is that we ask our students to be involved in community service. Community service is very important. It helps to build good young men and women. And then there's training sessions for our building leadership teams. Our leaders in this district need support as well, and they need professional development. And then create learning moments to encourage and support student voice within the district. So one of the things that our students asked is that they'd like to meet with the cabinet. A group of students would like to meet monthly to talk about what's going on. They want to go straight to the top, and I think that that's wonderful, but I also think that they have to work with their administration in their buildings. But we're gonna give them that forum. It's always allowing for the student voice to be heard. And then lastly is our communication task force, internal and external communications. Communication protocols followed in all buildings. We have to have the same way in every building to communicate with our families. The next one is create opportunities for families to engage more. We need to find ways to bring our families in. We know that our families work very hard and that sometimes things happening at 2:00 in the afternoon just don't work. So we need to make opportunities for them to feel as they're part of the community. Because when we have the parents feeling that they're part of the community, they're gonna support their children and support us as a school district. Strengthen ties between community and our students. And lastly, communicate regularly with residents without children. And I mentioned that, that this year, we actually took a look at and asked those people who live in our community but don't have children to come in and talk to us. What's next? I'm asking the Board of Education to approve the strategic plan. Once you approve it, we will then begin to implement it. Our plan is for the spring of 2019 to conduct a survey to assess our progress, review our strategic intents, and determine if we've met our goals, because we have goals for everything we plan on doing. And lastly, as our hashtag reads, Inspiresuccess. Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you to everyone who participated in this project because it was really done with a good heart.
Reports by Board of Education committees. Chris, you have anything new on the policy front?
No, we did finish these policies. We had one or two that we sent back, we're waiting for clarification, but nothing right now. We're gonna wait till the middle of September, I think we're gonna have a meeting.
I think so, yes.
We haven't put it on the calendar yet. We're trying to let school start, and then we'll go through. Right now, there is no meeting on hand.
All right. Thank you. Don?
I think we have quite a few things going on on the
Just a few.
From the facilities committee. I'll let Patrick then, if there's anything outside of
Yeah, I think what you're referring to, Don, is the two resolutions on the agenda this evening under the business and financial section. The first resolution deals with the SEACRT, which is the state environmental quality review process, and our architects and engineers and associates have gone through a pretty comprehensive study in the last six weeks or so to make a determination that there be no adverse environmental impact with the proposed capital project, which, if you recall, involves four elements. HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning improvements here at the high school, placing the cooling tower in the chillers, the replacement of a grass field, field number three, which is the football field, with a multipurpose turf field, a new track that would surround that field, and a second turf field on field 12, which is a grass field also, with a multipurpose soccer, baseball, lacrosse field. So that's one resolution that's on the agenda this evening. The other resolution has to do with the special meeting, I'm air quoting "special meeting," which is the legal term they use for essentially putting a proposition before the voters, asking, or, you know, just voting on the capital project itself. The voters need to authorize that. And in that proposition, we would have the option of borrowing up to $4 million and using about 4.4 from our capital reserve. So it's not something we absolutely need to do, but we have the authority to do that.
Thank you. Any progress on Central Valley, and will it be ready in time for the start of school?
Yes and yes. There has been a lot of progress, right? They've brought a huge number of resources to bear on that to finish the front parking lot. Really, it's three parking lots. And I know that our facilities director, Peter Crideroni, had a meeting, I think, yesterday with Yonkers, and they're on track to finish for the start of school.
Does that include the access road from 32 up to the high school?
It does not, no. That access road will be finished at a later date, probably October, November timeframe. And we were aware of that when they looked at the schedule. The critical element was the parking lot in front of CV to get school open and started. So, you know, we had been in discussions with them about that, and we said, look, that's the priority right now. So that would be first. The athletic parking lot, they call it Parking Lot E, which is on Nininger, that needs to be paved, it's curbed, so I think that would be fairly, done fairly quickly. They would do that, you know, probably relatively soon after. And there's a few little elements in front of CV that would be done at a later date. And what I'm specifically talking about is the exit, which is sort of in the center of the property. For the time being, that would remain where it is. It would be sort of the current exit. The long-term plan is to shift that a little bit, and they would do that at a later date, not that much later, maybe a month or two later, because they would also have to move the traffic light, and they would have to begin work on the other side of Route 32. So, you know, for the time being, the parking lots will be done, and we'll continue to use sort of the existing entrance to the north and the existing exit, you know, sort of in the middle of the property. You know, the big change, you know, if we talk about change to that, right now, we have two exits, right? There's a southern exit, which is one way to out, and that's really in the staff parking lot. We won't have that anymore. That's gonna go away. So it would be, you know, just two ways, you know, in and out.
Okay. But come first day of school, we're gonna be all set to go?
We should be all set to go.
All right.
No, we will be all set to go.
We will be all set to go.
I should, will.
From your lips to God's ears, right?
God's been listening to me lately.
That's good. Yeah, they've made a ton of progress, though. They're doing a good job.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Just go back to
All right. I have to go back one step. Can I have a motion to approve the strategic plan?
Motion.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Report from our student representative, Christian Hess.
Nothing really to report yet, really, until school starts, but I am excited to get to work and figure out the district and schools and everything, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Personnel.
Thank you very much. It's been a busy summer in the HR office, but I respectfully request the approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Business and financial.
So I would respectfully request the approval of the items under the business and financial section of the agenda, so I'll just kind of briefly go through this. So we have our standard monthly reports, financial reports for June. We have four donations. A Stradivarius cello from the Tush family to the Monroe Woodbury Music Program. We have an area acoustic guitar from Mary Ann Whiteman to the North Main Elementary. A donation of $240.73 from Stop &amp; Shop A+ Rewards Program to Smith Clove Elementary. A donation of $955.75 from Orange and Rockland for a STEM award to Eileen Machetti at Smith Clove Elementary. We have six contracts for approval, four agreements for special education-related services, one agreement with our bond counsel, Hawkins-Dellafield Wood, again, related to the capital project, proposed capital project, and one agreement with the town of Woodbury for a school resource officer agreement for the upcoming school year. We have six resolutions. I mentioned one resolution for the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and that's, part of that is a negative declaration, so this project, proposed project, would have no adverse environmental impact. Four resolutions to allocate year-end surplus and authorize reserve transfers. One resolution to authorize the special meeting on October 23rd, which I mentioned also, which would be, we're asking the voters if they would want to authorize and approve the proposed capital project. Under, let's see, number five, 12.5, we have obsolete items from Buildings and Grounds, Smith Clove, and the MCC, there's a fairly lengthy list there. And finally, we have bid awards, a series of bid awards for the food service program. Two awards for the Smart Schools Bond Act cabling project, this is the capital project where we're using the state money, the Smart Schools Bond Act money. And the two contractors are Pearl River and Albright Electric, and I'm happy to say the bids came in lower than we had expected, so that's good news. It looks like we're gonna be able to do cabling in all seven of our buildings. Initially, we had thought it might be five, and we'd have to defer two of the buildings, but that's good news. And finally, there is an award for digital signs at Central Valley Elementary School. That'll be part of the improvement, you know, a new parking lot, right? And we're gonna have a new And we're gonna have a new sign out front there.
Nice. The SRO, is that just for the high school?
No.
No.
Sorry, I answered that. So the SRO is going to be assigned to the high school. But we, our expectation is that he's gonna rotate, go to the middle school. He's gonna be on this side of town. So it would be the middle school, Central Valley, and Smith-Clove. So we had that meeting today, and that was really to iron that out. We want there to be flexibility. If we need a police officer in one of the buildings in this side of town, then we would like him to be there. And that was really what the conversation was about. Will he be a lot of the time at the high school? Probably, yes. But he's, he's not solely assigned to just the high school. He's assigned to all the buildings.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the committees on special education and preschool special education?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Reports by the Board and Central Office. Chris?
I just want to welcome everyone back to school. Teachers, staff, administrative, students, everybody. Next week, we'll be starting school, I guess. Just want to welcome back. I want to thank Dawn and Mr. Cassidy for all the work they did with the MW Cares. It'll be nice for the high schools to start coming back and see something new for them to look at and give them a reason to want to come through the door, I guess. Season, summer's coming to an end. So we've got a lot of work to do, I guess, with our facilities plan and all these other policies that need done. So welcome in.
Thank you. Dawn?
Well, I was able to attend the summer school graduation, and I was proud of the students' commitment to their education. I was also recently at the MW Cares Brick Walkway in Valiant. I just want to say that it was an amazing event. And the community support, the district support, the Board of Education's support really affirmed our vision for this day.
And if people still want to purchase a brick, you've opened it up for a little bit more?
We did open it up again. It'll open up, it's open now, and it'll run till September 14th.
And they go right onto the MW Cares website?
They will be installed in time for the MW Cares Day on October 26th.
If they want to purchase a brick, they go...
If they want to purchase a brick, they can go onto the high school website. There's a link that says MW Cares 2018. And there's a direct link in there to purchase the brick.
Great, thank you. Dawn?
Welcome everyone back to school. I know the parents are probably thrilled. It's been a busy, I guess, summer for Patrick and his team with all of the facilities work and the additional work that we're gonna start taking on once the, once we put out the bid. So I'm excited about that. It's, it's exciting to see what it's gonna change the school into and all the capabilities that we're in.
Suzanne?
Welcome back, everyone. And I would really like to congratulate Mr. Cassidy and Dawn on a beautiful job on the MW Cares walkway and everyone else who contributed to that. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Rodriguez and her team for the strategic plan and all the hard work that you put into that. I also had the pleasure of attending the summer school graduation, and it was beautiful. And I'd like to congratulate all our graduates, both June and August, and wish everyone a successful start to the new school year.
Christian?
I'm just excited to get to work. I'm thankful to be here and... Yeah? No, excited to score, but...
Donna?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and best wishes for the new school year.
Thank you.
Vargov?
We are excited to the welcoming everybody back to school. We're ready, we had a lot of infrastructure projects and technology. We rolled out about 600 Chromebooks. That brings about 4,000 Chromebooks in the district. So we're ready to implement more technologies in the school district. And thank you for approving strategic plan, Smart School Bond and strategic plan.
Mr. Hasser, Dr. Hasser.
Congratulations also, to echo what everybody else has said to the MW Cares Committee, and particularly Ms. Towber and Mr. Cassidy. I've watched firsthand the hard work and time that has gone into the planning of this event. And it's just really exciting to see things really materialize and come to fruition. And I know that it's gonna be great. Congratulations to all the new staff appointed this evening. Looking forward to working with everybody. I agree, summer school graduation was awesome. And it was, it was fantastic recognizing our additions to the class of 2018. And finally, it's great seeing all of the students returning. There was a bunch of kids who were here for the MW Cares event and seeing all of the student athletes back for the fall sports season. And we're looking forward to a great school year. See you guys next week.
Patrick?
The district had its annual external audit last week. And so I'd just like to thank all the staff in the business office and Tanya Mulrad, the treasurer, for all the work that went into that process. It's a busy time leading up to it. There's a lot of preparation. And it can be a little stressful at times. But again, everyone rose to the occasion and did a great job. Thank you.
Matt?
Like everybody else, we are all excited for next week. We hired some incredible people this summer. They are not only qualified, but I think everybody would agree that they're just good people. So we're looking forward to getting them on board and working alongside them. So congratulations to our newly hired employees this evening. And have a great weekend.
Stacy?
I too want to thank Mr. Cassidy and Dawn and the entire MW Cares team. There's a lot of work that went into today and October. So I commend you guys, and I look forward to the actual day. Thank you to Mrs. Rodriguez for the strategic plan. I know the miniature version that the audience saw tonight, but it was lovely to see such a great presentation. I loved all the photos. Everything was great. So it was a great presentation. I want to wish everybody good luck on the first day of school. Good luck to all the fall athletics that will be happening and all the upcoming preparation for concerts. And it should be an exciting year. I look forward.
Anthony?
Welcome back to everyone and best of luck for a successful school year. Thanks to Dawn and John, Mr. Cassidy, for the Monroe Cares event tonight. It was a great event. And thank you, Mr. Azrati, for stepping into the very large shoes of Mr. Huber and running this show tonight, so...
Elsie?
Me. So there's two things that were, that were not part of the strategic plan, which of course, I'm still thinking about this. So the long-range financial plan was not part of that because that is really being generated by Patrick's office. And then the facilities plan was not part of that because we have a facilities committee. So I just wanted to make sure of that. I want to thank everyone who participated in the strategic plan for their honesty and their willingness to do this work. Dawn and John's vision was a thought, a moment of a thought. And then they said, "We can do this." And then they started to tell other people they can do this. And here they did it. So I am incredibly proud of the work that they have done because it's done with a true care about people. And that's what we're in. We're in the people business. And today is just an example of, you know, what we can do when you have an idea and everybody else follows you. So imagine what we can all do if we had that tenacity. So thank you. I'm excited about school starting. I don't know about anybody else, Chris. You're not, you don't look so happy. But, but it's wonderful because, you know, it's like the kids are coming back and seeing their faces and listening to them.